Call to order the meeting of Monday, April the 11th. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Amos. Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of March 28th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
To part.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. And just for the council, I think everybody should have in front of them an additional Resolution 16-054 in front of them. If you don't speak up, it's added to the agenda on the Hunter House Hospitality House. We now move forward to the public comment portion of our meeting. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening, please come forward, give us your name, and you have four minutes.
My name is David Carr. And tonight, I would like to speak to the issue on the bond issue that Port Huron Schools is asking us to vote on on May the 3rd. I'm here to try to give a glimpse into the immensity of the Port Huron Schools $153 million bond issue. It's the largest bond issue that I can ever remember having to vote on with the schools or with any other issue really in our area. I'd like to go back just a little bit. In 2011, just five years ago, a $22.8 million bond issue was passed for the express purpose of, and I read from the ballot back then, "technology infrastructure, remodeling buildings and classrooms, including safety and security, energy conservation, climate control," and a whole bunch of other things. If that sounds familiar, it should be, because these are the same issues that are addressed in the 2016 bond issue with a lot of additionals, except that it's seven times the 2011 bond issue. Where did the $22.8 million go? Did it just evaporate? By the way, 2011 was a 20-year bond, so we still have 15 years to pay on that. $153 million, where will it go? Let me just give you a quick glimpse. PHN, Port Huron Northern. $20 million, Port Huron School South, High School South. $14.7 Kimball, $17.6 with a new school. Early education building, $12.4, that's a new building. Wilson, $7.1. Central, $7.1. Flexible learning spaces, approximately 2,000 square feet additions to another eight buildings in the district. We need all this additional space for an exploding student population, right? On the contrary, Port Huron Schools has lost nearly 3,000 students in the last 11 years. Not one of those years did student count ever stay static, but every year it has gone down by 200 to 300 students, including the '15-'16 school year. The $22.8 million borrowed in 2011 had no effect on the decline. Would you not think that if money thrown at the problem was the answer, that you would see a decline in the decline? $153 million, that's $17,000 per student. Millions in interest, up to maybe as much as $100 million over the course of a 30-year bond. 12% to 15% property tax increases. Increased maintenance and operating costs all make the situation unsustainable, since bond money cannot be used for operating costs. This is the 2011 over again on steroids. If this bond passes, it would be like PHS, Port Huron Schools.
Mr. Carr, your four minutes is up.
Okay. I want to thank you for the time that you've given me, and I also want to thank you for your service. Having served on school boards for aggregate of probably 30 years plus, I know what the position is, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? Please come forward, give us your name, and you have four minutes.
Scott Richard Warden, 412 Grand River, City of Port Huron. I actually came here, which I'll talk about my public comment, after I just saw the little agenda here, and I noticed that Hunter Hospitality House being recognized as a nonprofit in the City of Port Huron is on for a resolution, which I always want to say it's an outstanding startup volunteer organization. It does great work for our community. I'm not here representing them, but when I noticed that, that's just another great little sign of compassion and somebody's real hard work and interest to fulfill a need in our community, so I just wanted to address that that I saw it. I just came here, I saw in the paper a little news release about a potential, another option for development for the waterfront property over here by Stevens, I think it was Stevens Industries I saw in the paper, about a potential, you know, five to seven-story type condo complex, and I was very excited to hear about that, as we're always looking across the way at. Sarnia has quite a few residential or condos on the river. You know, they're a little ahead of the game with us, but they've shown us a pretty good example on a probably highest and best use and a great, great thing for our community, if that's something to go through. It's nothing against the previous proposal. I think Mr. Wolfson had some stuff and had some time, but I'll tell you, when somebody steps up like that, especially somebody longstanding in the community with the wherewithal with that, I think it's something to look forward to, because these are perfect times to keep looking ahead to the positive side of Port Huron, and to see something that would utilize space like that. I haven't seen the diagrams or the layout, but I can tell you, I can imagine in my mind just to see a five to seven-story complex there for increasing the tax dollars, but also a draw to our community. It may be a great option. So I'm asking you, city council members, you know, City Manager Mr. Freed and Mayor Pauling Rep., to hopefully we can seriously consider that option, if it is a solid option, and give them a fair consideration on that, because it's a pretty exciting thing to kind of hear about something like that as an alternative to the other proposal. There may actually be room for something that maybe there's going to be a phase two, I don't know. But for waterfront, for an option, we do have the Edison Shores, which was a great development for the view, and to have something that probably quite a few people will be able to have access to, to see the river, see the bridge, and even see downtown Port Huron. Again, I don't know the layout, but it's something I just wanted, it's not on the agenda. I think it's going to be coming up. You guys probably be considering or talking about it in the next month or so, but I really hope that that's something that we, you know, you guys have good consideration in, and something that might be a higher and best use for our community. Thank you. And again, now that spring is here, I've shaved my beard, and sun's out, we just need old man winter to go to the south side of the equator for a little bit, because this is a beautiful area, as you know, here in Port Huron and the Port Huron area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? If you come forward, give us your name, you have four minutes. See no one, our public comment closed, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Somed.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford will take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
On the consent agenda, approve the reappointments of Kevin Baker, Kathy Holt, and William Vogon to the Historic District Commission, terms to expire March 10th, 2019. Prove the vacation of a portion of Ontario Street right-of-way bound by Bard, Huron, McMorn, and Erie with reservation of a partial public utility easement. Prove vacation of a portion of Andrew Murphy Avenue right-of-way between Erie and Ontario with reservation of a partial public utility easement. Prove the vacation of a portion of McMorn Boulevard right-of-way with reservation of a partial public utility easement. And recognize the Hunter Hospitality House Incorporated as a nonprofit organization in the city of Port Huron. And we'll move on to from the city manager, number one.
Is accepting the unit price bid from Chemtrade Chemicals US LLC in the amount of $323.39 per dry ton for an estimated 367 dry tons of aluminum sulfate for use at the wastewater treatment plant and the water filtration plant.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, just a point of awareness, since both of these, at least one and two both deal with the purification of the water, and my questions will be from both of them, could we take them both together, or is that a problem?
Does anybody have an attraction to that?
Does anybody have a problem with that?
No, it doesn't seem to be, so you can read number two at the same time.
Number two is accepting the unit price bid from JCI Jones Chemicals Incorporated in the amount of $0.69 per gallon for an estimated 171,000 gallons of sodium hypochlorite for use at the wastewater treatment plant and water filtration plant.
Is there a motion?
Somed.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, discussion.
Yes, Mayor Rep., I would just like to ask, was it you, Lenny, the wastewater? I know both of these deal with both the purification, you know, of the drinking water. Now, do we have to have both of them at the same time? Are they, is it one without the other, and how long since we had to purchase that?
Madam Councilmember, Madam Mayor, the two chemicals that you've put together are the aluminum sulfate and the sodium hypochlorite. They are both used at the wastewater plant, but they're different. In fact, the aluminum sulfate is used both at the wastewater plant and at the water plant, and it's for solids removal from the water. The sodium hypochlorite is also used at the water plant and the wastewater plant, and it's both, it's for disinfection. Different functions altogether, but they're both needed.
Yeah, I know they were different functions. My question was, we have to have them both at the same time? You can't do one without the other?
They serve in different parts of the process.
But the same operation, they're still functioning as a system, operation at the wastewater. That's what I'm trying to get to.
I'm afraid I'm not sure what the question is.
If I could, you're asking if we need them both at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you both have, yeah, the one counter the other? You know, you have to use them both?
They're both being used in different applications.
They're using different parts of the process. The one is for removal of solids that's in the water.
And the other one's for disinfect.
And the other's for disinfection, which is at the end of the process.
Right, yeah, and that's what I was trying to establish.
Right, okay.
Thank you so much.
This is our yearly purchase, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
Isn't this done on a yearly basis, pretty much?
Yes, ma'am. We purchase these on bulk, and we have an annual contract, and this is the time of year in which this comes forward.
How does it compare to last year?
The last year's bulk purchase for both of these, anticipated that question. Last year's purchase for the aluminum sulfate and this year's purchase are within two dry tons of each other, there's no difference. The sodium hypochlorite, we're actually buying 27,000 pounds less, and that's simply because of the nature of the process and the fact that we're pumping less water than we did last year, and it's a function of the flow through the plant. The more water we pump out, the more we need, and that's actually is reflected by the amount of water we get back into the wastewater plant. So when our flows go down, the flow out and in goes down, and the need for sodium hypochlorite is reduced.
Madam Mayor, good.
Yes.
Lenny, the year-over-year per gallon cost, do we see an increase in these chemicals? Or are they decreasing or staying the same?
The unit price on the sodium hypochlorite remained essentially the same. The unit price for the aluminum sulfate actually went down about $5.5 per ton.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
No, just a comment that this, these, both of these chemicals have to do with our drinking water, so it is a significant kind of a thing that we want to be mindful of.
Actually, the two that you picked are, work both at the water plant and the wastewater plant.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, and we'll move on to item three.
Is accepting the unit price bid from Carmouche Lime Incorporated in the amount of $194.22 per dry ton for an estimated 400 dry tons of hydrated lime for use at the wastewater treatment plant.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
You both, is there any discussion?
Just one question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
Maybe Lenny could explain, we only have one bidder for this product, that's kind of unusual, isn't it, for?
Well, we've had one bidder, but we've had one bidder, the same bidder, for several years to date. And the prices remain stable, and he's the only one, the only company that is providing this particular product.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item four, please.
Is accepting the unit price bid from PVS No Wood Chemicals Incorporated in the amount of $0.06 per wet pound for an estimated 604,500 wet pounds of sodium hydroxide for use at the wastewater treatment plant.
Is there a motion?
Somed.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz? Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I guess just one question I had, I see this practically, it was determined by a lot, and just looking at how we had this JCI Johnson Jones Chemicals was already the successful bidder on one, I guess my question is, is I just as soon stick with the one company if the pricing is exactly the same, and would it be up to council to determine who wins, who's the lot or the?
I think there's probably a procedure settled in your purchasing, maybe the manager could answer that. I think that's probably the way that it needs to be.
Correct, and we bid these out separate intentionally, and in a tie bid, we do draw from the lot, and that's just the way the chips fall.
Okay.
If we did it any other way, it would discourage probably future bidders from bidding.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yeah, I would just like to ask, Lenny, I know under this bid, the sodium hydroxide, this is, it kind of helps to reduce the lead that comes into the water, is that correct?
No, ma'am, this is for odor control.
It's for what?
Odor control.
But it can be used for that, yeah, it's odor control, but doesn't it have something to do with the lead also?
No, ma'am.
It has the reason, okay.
No, ma'am. That would be, and a chemical that would be added to the water plant would be a phosphate. This particular is for the wastewater plant, and it's strictly odor control, using odor control.
But if you use it somewhere else, it would be for the lead?
No, ma'am.
Are you sure?
Yes.
You want to say that? Oh, okay.
Pardon?
No, I'll just take you offline.
The sodium hydroxide is strictly an odor control chemical.
Yeah, it is that, but it also, and some of the research is used to help to reduce the lead from coming into the water. Well, this isn't a time for that, but I was just wondering that, because I know a lot of municipalities are dealing with this lead issue, and I just wanted to know, point specific, was that our approach here?
No, ma'am, the lead issue is one related to the corrosive nature of the water. We don't have that problem here.
Oh, okay.
And in this case, the sodium hydroxide that we're using, or we're buying, is to be used in the wastewater plant, not the water plant, and it's part of the end product, is part of the control to keep our totally contained water plant from off-gassing nauseous gases.
Oh, okay. Well, you did answer my question, you just said, and I knew it was used for the corrosion of the plants to reduce the pipes, and you just said that, and that's what I was referencing. So, okay, so we both said the same thing, but you had another agenda for it. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions on item four? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, we'll move on to item five.
Is accepting the bid from Clean Cut Maintenance LLC in the amount of $660 for sidewalk snow removal with an estimation of 10 times per year of approximately 120 city-owned vacant lots.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, I guess before I open it for discussion, I guess I was kind of surprised to see snow removal, is this the time of the year? We usually bid on snow removal?
No, but after yesterday, we decided to go for it.
It's just in honor of yesterday.
I was going to say, this seems a little out of season, so, is it? I mean, normally we do it this time here? Okay, I don't remember that, so, is there any discussion from council?
Just a comment, I discussed this prior to the meeting with Lenny, we were talking down here in kind of a mini caucus before the meeting, is how a company could do 120 city lots for 660 bucks a snow. But Len says that we've been successful with their use, and as long as they can keep doing it at that price, I think it's fair. It's just hard to understand when kids are charged $20 to $40 to shovel a sidewalk, and these people do 120 units for 660 bucks, why, it's a bargain.
Yep. Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I guess do all 120 lots have sidewalks or areas that have to, I mean, because it's kind of the same 120 lots, I'm assuming that are going to be mowed.
All those vacant lots.
Yeah, I believe they have city sidewalk in front of them, all city-owned city lots.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item six.
Is accepting the bid from Kevin's Lawn Care and Snow Removal Incorporated in the amount of $1,490 per mow and trim of approximately 120 city-owned vacant lots.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald and Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion? Take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item seven.
Is accepting the bid from Van Dyke Lawn Service in the amount of $1,020 per mowing and trim for lawn maintenance of various city-owned parks and properties.
Is there a motion?
Somed.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald.
Is there a reason we bid lawn mowing for the vacant lots and then the parks separately?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, because some, the parks require different equipment and different sized mower decks, and it calls for different hauling, and so by breaking them up, we can essentially cherry-pick the low bids.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just a comment, you know, when you look at these, that we saved about $700 on the previous one with Kevin's Lawn Care, and if Kevin's Lawn Care would have been able to do this in conjunction with what Sherri's doing, they would have done it for only $22 more, so I kind of go along with Sherri that maybe it's something we want to look at in the future, that if we could save, we would end up saving about $500 cutting.
Madam Mayor, good.
Yes.
One of the reasons why we break it up in the manner in which we do is two reasons. One, we're able to, on the different applications, different mowers and mower decks and how you haul those, we're able to essentially cherry-pick the low bid, but also, we ensure for smaller entrepreneurial businesses to essentially bid as well, be successful in bidding. And so, just like we do the line painting, we break it between large and small quantities, we try to do the same thing here, so it's two parts. One, the application, and being able to cherry-pick the different types of low bids, and then two, allowing for more smaller companies to compete.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember.
I guess on that question too, though, wouldn't it be, say, Kevin's might come in if you have a bigger bulk deal, to give you a better price at some time too? You could bid them both out altogether and separately at the same time, and then if it works out that way, you could either go for both.
We discussed that, allowing to bid it both ways, and something we'll look at in the future.
If there's no other discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, item eight.
Is accepting the bid from Douglas Safety Systems LLC in the amount of $10,490 for two thermal imaging cameras for use by the Port Huron Fire Department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
What's the lifespan on these type of cameras?
We've got someone coming up for an answer.
Our last purchase of these cameras was 2005, and we're having some ghosting issues and some other issues. The technology has changed so rapidly, though, in these type of things. I mean, the old days, you were carrying a projector on your side, now it's a very small handheld type item. It's a necessary piece of equipment.
Chief, could you elaborate, as you did for me previously, the application and how often these are used?
They're used on every fire, and I'll give an example. Let's say you have a smell of smoke or odor at your home, but you don't see flames. We'll come in and use this type of camera and see if we can isolate a heat source in a wall. If we didn't have that camera, we have a camera that's working, not working correctly, we take an axe to where we think it's at and start looking for it. It's better to isolate it and save some of your home versus literally looking all over for maybe a hot wire in the wall. Another application that we use this is for missing children, especially at night, you know, if they were to lay down, or an elderly person, dementia person was to lay down, we have those thermal cameras that allow us to find the heat source, we've used them for that. We've used them on people that have broken into buildings to find a heat source. Generally, the dog does a good job in finding them, but if that doesn't work, we'll bring in that thermal camera. So there's a number of different reasons. It's the same technology, it's on our boat.
Thank you for explaining that. We will take the vote. Oops, I'm sorry, you have another question?
Sorry, I just thought, how come we're only buying two instead of one for each station?
We are getting three, but when I saw the initial price of these, the ones that they sent to me at first were about $13,000 and $14,000, and I couldn't get them all in one budget year. So what I did is I broke them up, we wrote a grant for one through emergency management, got the most expensive one we needed through emergency management, and then we split the other two up. I was going to buy one next budget year and this budget year, but we made a determination it's better to get them both now, so we'll have three, one for each station.
All right. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
He brings a point, they were, there was one scheduled for this budget year and one scheduled for next budget year, but due to the ghosting issues and the application and the importance of it, I felt there's no cost savings for waiting till July, so we bundled them in this budget year as we could afford them.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Ruiz.
Another example, again, of grant writing and all the departments, and how you all go out and look for money and quite often find it, and appreciate that.
Thank you.
You put a new name to Robin Peter to pay Paul.
We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, we'll move on to resolutions. Number one, please.
Is authorizing eight payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I have a question about the Johnson Controls $6,000 change order. Do they do additional work to require this?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I authorized that change order. When they took out the, the, was the handle they were replacing, the valves, there was four or five valves that need to be able to turn, and they were completely broken in place and not functioning. And so they could not install a new system unless those valves were replaced. So I did authorize that change order.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I guess on that question, if we were bidding something out like that, how would they not know the valves were stuck beforehand?
I believe they're behind the unit.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions, discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, we'll move on to item two under resolutions.
Approving the intergovernmental agreement with Port Huron and Fort Gratchit Charter Townships to share the expenses for dredging of the Black River Canal.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Maybe you'd like to explain a little bit about it?
Absolutely. As you all know, when the canal was built way back in 1912, it was a TIF district set up by the paper companies to fund the ongoing maintenance and, of the canal. That TIF stopped collecting funds in 2001 when it expired. And we use that fund balance to dredge every single year since then. The issue is, is about midpoint last year, that fund essentially became insolvent. And dredging costs average between, between anywhere from 5,000 to 35,000 dollars. It really depends on the weather. There was at one point last year, it was filled up, and we sent the dredgers out there on Sunday. They had it opened up on Wednesday. And then the following Sunday, I had a cup of coffee and watched it fill in within a couple hours. So it really does fluctuate. Also, the DEQ has put more restrictions. We used to be able to give away the sand. So the dredging was pretty much done pro bono. They would dredge it, take the sand, sell it for septic fields or house foundations. But the DEQ no longer allows that in our permit, so instead of giving away the sand as a, a cost reduction, we now have to haul that sand, hold it in place, let it drain. As you all can tell, we've been putting it at Lakeside Park, which has become a, a unique dune after many years. The problem we had is, we simply, since there is no more fund to fund this, this would come out of general fund expenditures. And we all know from the past year and a half, the general fund, which pays for parks and recreation, police and fire protection, is very tight. And the reality is, is we would still dredge, but we wouldn't be able to do the frequency. Maybe two or three times a year. But the problem is, it needs dredged sometimes four, five, six times a year. And I always know when the canal's dammed up, because within an hour, my phone starts to ring from people all over the county who want that thing dredged. And so I began having conversations. I meet about, once a month, I have dinner or breakfast with all the township supervisors. And I began essentially expressing some of my concerns that, you know, just so you know, we're probably not going to be able to dredge as often. And it's very important to the boating community, not only for recreation as the natural island loop, but just as important is a safety avenue, an escape route for the lake. I've personally been caught up in a storm there where I use the canal lead off, and it's scary. And so sometimes when a storm kicks up, boaters can't make it down to the Black River. And so they use that canal as an escape route. And so we began talking with all the township supervisors about our, essentially our mutual interests in recreation and in safety. I pulled up a parcel map that showed about 25% of the parcels belong in Fort Gratchit, along the Black River, two miles up and two miles south. Same as Port Huron Township, about 25%. And the rest fall from the city. And so I approached them on the concept. I said, you know, if, if we dredge less, this isn't going to just affect the city of Port Huron residents. This is also going to affect your residents. And a lot of them who use the canal and the Black River, would you like to talk about this? And luckily, we have such a healthy relationship with our townships that they immediately began dialoguing back and forth what we could do to make this happen. I believe that Fort Gratchit, or Port, excuse me, Port Huron Township did a online poll of their residents, who were all in support of some type of cost sharing. So what we broke it down to was 25% of the cost will be beared by Fort Gratchit, Port Huron Township, and the 50% would be us. We capped theirs at $7,500. So this will bring an additional $15,000 a year, which will essentially reduce our costs by 50%. Now, it's 25% up to $7,500. So if we only dredge $10,000 next year, then they're only going to pay $2,500. So this agreement is a year-to-year agreement, which we can, anyone can opt out at at any time if it's not working out. In lieu of that, we've also allowed their residents to use Lakeside Park at city rates, which we, actually, to be quite frank, it's very difficult. We average between 400 and 600 cars a day on the weekend out there. And if you roll up and your driver's license says Port Huron, oftentimes, you're going to get it at the city rate. So we're really not going to be losing that much funding at all. Last year, our Lakeside Park saw more than 12,000 vehicles in the park. So they will get in at city rates, encourage local people looking to using the park. So I'm very pleased with our townships coming to the table. They didn't have to, but I think they realized the value to their parks and recreation system. In Fort Gratchit and in Port Huron Township, they installed kayak launches and ADA accessible park options along the Black River, which utilize the canal. So it kind of fit with all of our parks plan to make this work.
Thank you for negotiating the agreement. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Yeah, I too would like to join you and thank our city manager. And I know he put a lot of time in, a lot of meetings and all that. I'd just like him to know that we're here as council members to come help supporting him too, if you just let us know that you're going to be, you know, meeting at that certain time. I think when we can show forces, united forces and speak volumes, so they just don't see you. They know that we actually support what you're doing. You mentioned that we can opt out anytime. Is there anything that, barriers or something that you see that, that a reason why opt out would be considered?
For us, no, since it's the money we didn't have coming in.
Right.
We, they would have to issue 30 days' notice. For them, I think it, you know, they just want to see how it works, gauge the support of their residents. And so I, I see no barriers. I don't anticipate it at all, actually. I think it's a pretty equitable agreement, so I don't foresee any major barriers, no.
Okay. And, and just lastly, I just think that this collaboration and this shared venture that we got going on, just hope it's the beginning of a lot of things that can happen throughout our county, you know, and trying to get together, so take some of that burden off of us. You know, we're all in this together.
I think, Madam Mayor, if I could add to that, I think one of the benefits is we've had such a healthy working relationship with the townships and collaboration with our Parks and Recreation Program. We do a lot of programming for Fort Gratchit and Port Huron Township residents who come and use our Parks and Recreation Program. So they kind of had one, one foot in the water already, and it was working out well. So this is just building upon that relationship that's already in place.
Okay.[1488.33]